Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My call to order, the regular meeting of September 3rd, 2025. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Beck. Mr. Chauncey.
Here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Helton.
Here.
Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Chairman Eversole.
Here. Invocation and pledge this morning be conducted by Commissioner Sharp. So all please rise.
Thank you, Chairman. We have with us today Reverend Jason Gaddis, who's the Senior Pastor at First Sittinary United Methodist Church, with the invocation, and then I'll lead us in the pledge.
Good morning. Let us pray. Most holy and gracious and almighty God, we thank you for the gift of this beautiful day you've given us, for a new opportunity for us to live the lives you've called us to live. I pray your blessings upon this commission, for the work that they do for the city of Chattanooga, for the Hamilton County area and for its citizens. May you bless them and guide them in the decisions they make, and in the well-being of all of them to bring glory to us. We pray all these things through your Son Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Face the flag, render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to-
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp. Okay. With that, I'll read a statement, because it is time. It's the first meeting in September. This is our meeting that will do the election of the Chair and the Chair Pro Term for Hamilton County Board of Commissions. In accordance to the Commission rules of order and pursuant to TCA 5-5-103, this legislative body, at its first session on or before September 1st of each year, shall elect a Chair and a Chair Pro Term. If more than one commission is submitted for consideration, the commission will vote by roll call, with each Commissioner stating the name of their choice when the Clerk calls for the respective Commissioner's name. If more than two Commissioners are nominated, and no other nominated receives six votes on the first ballot, then the lowest vote getter will be eliminated, and a second ballot will be cast considering only the remaining nominees. In other words, low personnel. The same procedure will continue until we have one nominee receiving the necessary six votes. Are there any questions with this process? If there are no questions, and there are no objections, I will now open the floor to accept nominations for Chair from this body. Commissioner Highlander.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Smith as Chair.
Okay. We do not need a second. So Commissioner Ken Smith. Are there any further nominations? Okay. Hearing none, the nominations are now closed. Since there's only one nominee for the Office of Commission Chairman, and there's no objections, the election will be conducted by acclamation. And there's no objections, I declare that Commissioner Ken Smith is elected to the Office of Commission Chairman by acclamation. Congratulations. All right. We will now open the floor and accept nominations for the Chair Pro Term. Commissioner Chauncey.
I'd like to nominate Lee Helton.
Okay. Commissioner Lee Helton has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are now closed. There's only one nomination for Office of Chair Pro Term. If there's no objections, the elections will be conducted by acclamation. There being no objections, I will declare Lee Helton is elected to the Office of Chair Pro Term by acclamation. Congratulations. We will now move forward with swearing in. You both go down, but it's one at a time.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ken Smith.
I, Ken Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of Chairman.
The duties of the Office of Chairman.
Hamilton County Board of Commissioners.
Hamilton County Board of Commissioners.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
And which I'm about to assume.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I will perform.
That I will perform.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
The duties of the Office.
The duties of the Office.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Tennessee.
Of the State of Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
If you'll raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Swear and repeat after me. I, Lee Helton.
I, Lee Helton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office.
The duties of the Office.
Of Chairman Pro Term.
Of Chairman Pro Term.
Hamilton County Board of Commissioners.
Of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
Of which I'm about to assume.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I will perform.
That I will perform.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
The duties of the Office.
The duties of the Office.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Thus ends our portion of the meeting, where we handle elections and our swearing in. So just really quick, before we move into the rest of the meeting, I just want to say thank you to my colleagues. This is a tremendous honor to be elected as Chairman. But I also, in addition to that, have been elected by this body themselves to even serve in this role. Prior to an election, I was appointed. So I'm incredibly humbled and appreciative of the trust that this body has placed in me over the years, and I will do everything that I can to serve it to the best of my ability, each and every one of you. So thank you again. And most importantly, thank you to my beautiful bride for being here with me. And to my friends that also arrived for this today. As most of you know, we don't have family here, so our friends are our family. And I very much appreciate the opportunity to do things with their support, and only with their support am I able to do it. My former colleagues, Councilman Ledford, Councilman Henderson, Chairwoman Noel, Councilwoman Dotley, thank you all for being here. I truly appreciate the show of support on a former body that I served. It's always good to know that you've done good enough service that people continue to support you, even when you move on. So I truly appreciate that. Just thank you to everybody. I'm honored and blessed. Thank you. Please.
I also want to say thank you to all the Commissioners. I appreciate your trust and support. Hopefully, I will serve in a manner which won't make you sorry for a vote of acclamation. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, moving on. Presentations, we have no presentations today. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? All right, thank you, sir. Minutes needing entered and recorded, we have August 13th, 2025 recessed meeting, August 13th, 2025 agenda meeting, and August 20th, 2025 regular meeting. What's the rule of the commission? All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Highlander. Seeing no lights, no one standing. Roll call, please.
Christopher Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Eversole.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Ken Smith.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. That's very nice. Our reports, we also have no reports entered into the record. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. All right, that takes us to resolutions. Madam Clerk, please read 925-1.
Resolution 925-1, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions and the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Graham, a second by Commissioner Beck. No discussion, no one standing. Roll call, please.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Eversole.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, without objection, let's bundle 925-2, 925-3, 925-4, 925-5, and 925-9, please.
Resolution 925-2, a resolution making appropriation to Bakewell Community Center in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 1. Resolution 925-3, a resolution making an appropriation to Central High School in the amount of $500 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 10. Resolution 925-4, a resolution making an appropriation to Central High School in the amount of $500 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 9. Resolution 925-5, a resolution making an appropriation to the Saudi Daisy and Montlake Historical Association in the amount of $1,500 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 1. Resolution 925-9, a resolution making an appropriation to Central High School in the amount of $500 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 8.
Motion approved. Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Mackey. Who was the second? I heard it down there. Beck. Commissioner Beck was our second. Seeing no lights, no one standing. Roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Mr. Eversole.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please read 925-6.
Resolution 925-6, a resolution to reappoint two members to the Hamilton County Industrial Development Board to serve a six-year term beginning September 3rd, 2025, and ending September 3rd, 2031. This resolution reappoints Ruben M. Taylor and Bill McCord.
Motion approved. Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Graham, a second by Commissioner Beck. No lights, no one standing. Roll call, please.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Eversole.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Smith.
Yes. All right, that ends our resolutions for committee as a whole. I will move on to committees. I've got Finance Committee next, since I just rolled off of that committee. I was wondering if maybe Commissioner Mackey, would you like to handle that item? It's Resolution 925-7.
Yes, sir, I'll take care of it.
Ready? I'm ready.
Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution?
Resolution 925-7, a resolution approving the annual renewal of Microsoft Office licenses from inside public sector from the NASPO Value Point Purchasing Cooperative, amounting to $150,731.92 for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Commissioners, this is a standard purchase from a co-op. I move that it be approved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Mackey, second by Commissioner Highlander. Seeing no lights, no one standing. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Eversole.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Yes.
Mr. Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. All right, next we've got Building and Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Helton, would you like to still handle that, sir?
Thank you, Chair. Madam Clerk, could you read 925-8?
Resolution 925-8, a resolution to approve the firm of Franklin Associates Architects, Inc., for design of the Howard School indoor sports facility.
Motion approved.
Second.
Hang on. I've got a motion by Commissioner Graham, second by Commissioner Shipley, and I do have a light. Commissioner Sharp, sir. Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and I'm not sure who to address this question to. Maybe Todd Lehman would be the right person, if I may. Please. I'm just curious as to the funding source of this project.
Yeah, and I may defer to either the mayor or finance, but there was some allocation of some funds in the South Broad Agreement that dictated some improvements at the Howard School, and this is part of that.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. If I may, Chairman, if Lee Brainerd would confirm how we're paying for this?
Yes, the majority of these funds will be coming from the 2020 bond fund that was, funds were set aside for this project.
Did we set those aside, like in this budget, or what?
Not during the budget process. Basically, they were just assigned there by the mayor. There's been discussion with the commission on where these items would be spent originally when we got the bond monies.
Okay. Just to be clear, I support the project. I'm certainly going to vote for it. I just thought it was going to be paid somehow from the South Broad, but it's coming from bond funds?
Yes, it's coming from bond funds, but again, the obligation basically came about with the negotiations and the terms in working through the South Broad TIF agreement. So primarily, that was one of the county's obligations, was to put capital into Howard School and surrounding school areas, whereas the city would put an equal amount of funding in roads around the stadium project.
Okay. So Lee, you said a 2020 bond fund. How much do we have left from a 2020 bond fund?
If you give me a minute, I'll look it up real quick.
Can you just get back to us with that, please?
Yes, I can.
That'd be great. Thank you, thank you, Lee. Thank you, Chairman.
Any more lights?
Seeing no lights. Roll call.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Eversole.
Yes.
Mr. Graham.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Smith.
Yes. That ends our resolutions. Now move into announcements. Commissioner Shipley.
Yeah, I feel like I need to say something this morning. I've been back to the comptroller. I talked to him personally. I can admit if I've been hasty on things, but I think our agreement was he could handle it better. I could handle it differently. Had he went our way back 2017, that would involve so many people, people that's long gone from this commission. And what he found was to be the trip. He was not pulling a stunt, I don't think, to embarrass anyone or do anything wrong. I've complimented him in the past on his job that he's done, and I have no ill will. It was a misunderstanding on all parts. Yours and mine could have been handled differently. We've got another full year to work together, and I want us to work together good. And I hope that we understand each other, but I do not have any ill will. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Baker?
No announcements.
Thank you. Commissioner Mackey?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Chair, I am looking forward to working with you and Commissioner Helton, and trying to make this commission even more effective in getting things done.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Beck?
No announcements.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. Congratulations, and congratulations to you two. Commissioner Helton, I echo Commissioner Mackey's sentiment, and thank you for the time. I do have, not necessarily an announcement, just an interesting thought that I've considered over the last day or so. It was announced from the Chattanooga Tourism Company recently that over $1.8 billion in tourism-related commerce has taken place in Hamilton County over the last year, which is the largest amount of spending through tourism that we've witnessed in Hamilton County. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk about how we invest in schools. We have some projects on the agenda today. We have some projects on the agenda today that we just approved for a number of millions of dollars, which I'm excited about. And I just wanted to point out that if we would truly explore new to us methods for funding education and educational facilities-related projects in Hamilton County, as I've written about with regard to a local option, sales tax, that $1.8 billion of other people's money that was spent in Hamilton County last year through tourism would equate to $9 million in money, in revenue, for Hamilton County government if we were able to pass that successfully in our county. $9 million for schools from people that are just visiting Hamilton County. I think that's something that we all need to continue to consider. I'd like to hear more conversation about that. $9 million would go a long ways to addressing facility needs in our county schools on an annual basis, reoccurring. But it would also equate, just in this past year's budget that we passed recently, it would equate to over a 2% raise for Hamilton County school teachers. We could have paid the full step increase for Hamilton County schools' teachers plus a 1% raise. Just to put it into perspective, this is a lot of money that would go a long ways to addressing the needs in our county, and it's money that we're just letting come into our community and slip right out of our hands, and I think that's something that we need to continue to consider. So thank you for the time, and I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hilton?
No announcements.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chauncey?
No announcements, Chairman.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you. I too would like to congratulate our new leadership, and you'll have my support, my prayers, my thoughts, and anything I can do to help you. I would like to say that I appreciate Commissioner Gino Shipley. It takes a real gentleman to say there's a difference of opinion, and I want to say when I make a mistake or when I feel like something needs to be clarified, I'll straighten it out publicly, and that's a gentlemanly thing to do, Commissioner. Thank you very much. I would like to announce the Fund for Excellence, which is the school, the coupon, they used to call it the coupon book people, but the Fund for Excellence sells the coupon books. They're $15 each. All the elementary schools in Hamilton County can do it. They've got some new and varied things that are going to be support. The mayor has allowed us to work in conjunction with the county fair. We're going to have an incentive for the kids that sell. They can go a day early and have some things up there, and we're very appreciative of that, but I hope the community will support this effort. It's not just the value of the coupon book. It is good for a full year. You could get some good value out of it, but more than that, $10 of that money goes directly to the school that it's sold for, and our schools need money. I don't care if you're from the inner city or the outer banks, it doesn't matter. Our young people need support, and let me encourage everyone to support the coupon books. It'll start this Friday, September 5th, and will end September 22nd. So thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eversole?
Yeah, Chairman, thank you. First of all, congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Proud of you and look forward to this next year, and I know that we'll be transitioning some projects that we're working on, so I look forward to working with you in this next year. Commissioner Hilton, congratulations to you as well. Just an announcement, the American Legion Post 257 in College Dale is having there be a part of American Legion's National Be the One Initiative to Support Veterans Suicide Awareness and Prevention. It's a 2.2-mile walk run that's at the College Dale Veterans Park Saturday morning, starts at 9:00. Would love to have as many people to join as possible, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to the Vice Chair. I'd also like to take a minute to thank Commissioner Eversole for his leadership as a Chair for the last two years. We greatly appreciate what you did. We had had some rocky waters or shark-infested waters, and you did a very, very good job leading us through that, and I greatly appreciate what you did, and I thank you. Also, my county district encumbered a lot of the city, and I live in the same neighborhood as Councilman Henderson. I want to welcome him to our meeting. I work very closely with Councilwoman Marveen and Councilwoman Dotley, and I don't want to offend anybody, but me and Ms. Dotley are like brother and sister. I mean, we work together very, very well, and I hope you all have that same relationship with your city council members, but we don't only work really well together, but we get a lot done together. So I appreciate your help. Also want to thank Gail Green and Ann Lowery for being here today. Welcome to our meeting today. Lee Hilton helped a young family that had a tragedy with a pancake breakfast, but through other sources, he found out that East Lake needed some football equipment, and so his lodge had a pancake breakfast last Saturday and raised quite a bit of money for that football team in my district. I was able to go and I was able to participate, but that was really spearheaded by Lee Hilton right there. So I wanted to thank him and congratulate him for what he's been able to accomplish. He really helped that football team out, and he helped our district out very much, and so thank you, thank you, thank you. And the Fund for Excellence, I have three grandkids that are selling books, so if you all want to just donate to Lookout Valley, I'll get my grandkids to sell your books. So just give me a holler after the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, congratulations to you and Commissioner Hilton.
Thank you, sir. Attorney Varnell?
No announcements.